Microphones, right?
No, you do use your microphones. You don't use your computer.
That's off.
Yeah.
Welcome to the Spokane City Council meeting. Ms. Fister, would you like to read the role?
First we do the flag.
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
And before we say the pledge, I wanted a special welcome to the members of the audience for the first time in about two years. So thanks for joining us in chambers. And I also wanted to extend a welcome to our new council members who have been working for a while but haven't been on the dais before today. Councilmember Spingle and Zepone. And I can't help but recognize Councilmember Cathcart's family, his mother, his wife, and his son Atlas. So thank you all for being here. With that, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have, we have no boards and commission appointments tonight, but we do have a committee recap from Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. Today, we held the meeting of the Urban Experience Committee. Just a few things to bring up. We had a great presentation by the Downtown Spokane Partnership, talked a lot about updating their activities and the clean team. They talked about Viaducts. They've talked about concerts that are coming up. So there's a lot of things planned as the community starts opening. So be on the lookout for those events. We also had a presentation from the Transit Oriented Development Framework Study that's available on the city council website or the City of Spokane website, if you want to take a look at that. And then finally, we had information from two-part grants for the Parks and Rec Department, two-part grants that are coming up that really are going to expand opportunities and activities for kids in the city. Some of the money is going to be used to offer scholarships for programs, recreational programs, trying to remove those cost barriers that might come into play if there's a child out there that can't afford to pay for something. There would be some funding there. Also, expansion of youth programs, summer camps, art classes, outdoor activities, therapeutic services, wellness programs, disc golf. Disc golf, Lori, we can play disc golf if you want.
Really looking forward.
BMX, or we could do BMX. Anyway, it was a great presentation, and more information on that can also be found on the City of Spokane website.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Stratton. That gets us to our legislative agenda. We're going to start with some special budget ordinances.
Ordinances, admitting ordinance number C 36161 passed by the city council December 13, 2021, and entitled in ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36177 Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, number one, increase revenue by $176,381. A $176,381 of the increased revenue is from the Department of Justice as part of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, JAG 21. Two, increase appropriations by $176,381. A $97,010 is provided solely for the procurement of law enforcement equipment. B $79,371 is provided solely for the subaward amount to Spokane County to be used for prosecution services and law enforcement equipment. This action arises from the need to procure law enforcement equipment as well as subaward to our grant partners.
All right, we have one speaker, again, our first in-person speaker for, in two years, Mr. Anwar Peace. Come on up. And in case people don't remember, I do have this little timer here. It'll go to yellow when there's 30 seconds and red when time is up. You have up to three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. I am opposed to the police department accepting and/or receiving any more funds from the United States Department of Justice until the city council passes a police reform package that the community is waiting for. They've been waiting 628 days for the council package. In 2012, the DLJ gave the police department 42 recommendations after coming to town to help fix SPD. While having lunch with the police chief and the ombudsman 11 months ago, the chief admitted that at least two of those recommendations have not been fulfilled from the DLJ. So before the police department accepts any more money from the United States Department of Justice, the city council must ask the DLJ to do a 10-year review of those 42 recommendations, which has been commonplace with other cities who have had DLJ recommendations. For far too long, we as a community have watched the city government has allowed this police department to become its own little magical fiefdom where standard HR practices or normal budgetary process takes place like other agencies have to do. We in the community have watched the police purchase armored vehicles with no public process or input. Speaking of vehicles, we in the community have watched the city government allow the police department to pilfer from a dedicated city loan program, which was meant to quickly update the squad car fleet, and instead, half of those funds were used for police equipment. Because of this fact, the squad car fleet is considered to be in a dangerous and dilapidated state, which could lead the police guild to file a grievance. Plus, no true accounting has taken place of all that police equipment that was purchased with those funds for the squad car loan program. Issues surrounding the lack of squad cars and police equipment recently has been spun by the police union to its officers that the city council is trying to defund the police, which in fact is not the case. The city council has given more money than the police department has asked for. Because of all these factors, for me, are huge red flags on either financial misconduct or poor management has taken place and should be looked into by forensic audit or a performance audit of this police department. No more blank checks for the police department from the city council until true accountability takes place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peace. And I noticed on my timer that the yellow light goes on with one minute remaining, not 30 seconds remaining, in case anyone's watching that. And Mr. Peace is from Spokane, Washington. That's all we have for community comment on this special budget ordinance. Is there any council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this, but I am requesting the administration do give us an update on their Criminal Justice Reform Task Force that was formed by the mayor and other community members. I believe that group has been meeting for a year. We have not heard anything back about which direction they're going in, what police reform or police solutions that are being offered in our community.
And I'll respond briefly. We have been meeting, not as often as we wanted to because of COVID, but there is a meeting coming up, and we're getting, I think, close to the end of Phase One, and I will convey that to the mayor and the people in it. I'm sure they would like to report out as well. So thanks for making that request. Any other council commentary? All right. With that, we get to have vote without me calling everyone's name, so I'm very grateful of that. So prepare to vote. All right. That passes seven to zero. Next special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36178 General Fund, number one, decrease the appropriation for the administrative specialist position in the Finance Department by $50,000. Two, increase the appropriation for contractual services by $50,000. Three, decrease the appropriation for the Director of Grants, Contracts, and Purchasing in the Grants Management Department by $60,000. Four, increase the appropriation for contractual services by $60,000. Five, there is no change to the overall appropriation level on the General Fund. And Accounting Fund, number one, decrease the appropriation for an accounting clerk in the accounting department position by $15,000. Two, increase the appropriation for contractual services by $15,000. Three, there is no change to the overall appropriation level in the Accounting Services Fund. This action arises from the need to transfer budget authority from personnel to non-personnel expenses to allow for temporary contractual staff support.
There's no public comment requested. Essentially, this allows us to hire some temporary workers that we can put to work right now while we attempt to recruit and hire full-time employees. Any other council commentary? All right, seeing none, prepare to vote. All right, that also passes seven to zero. Next special budget ordinance.
CDHS, oh, excuse me, ordinance C 36179 CDHS Operations Fund, number one, transfer one grants analyst from the CDHS Operations Fund to the Grants Management Department to the General Fund, in the General Fund, excuse me. A, decrease salary and benefits appropriation for the grants analyst by $82,389 and transfer the full-time employee to the Grants Management Department in the General Fund. This action reduces the number of grants analysts in the CDHS Operations Fund from one to zero. B, increase the salary and benefit contra accounts in the CDHS Operations Fund by a total of $82,389 for the position. C, these adjustments offset for a net impact of $0 to the CDHS Operations Fund. And General Fund, number one, transfer one grants analyst from the CDHS Operations Fund to the Grants Management Department in the General Fund. A, increase the salary and benefits appropriation for one grants analyst by $82,389 and add the full-time employee to the Grants Management Department in the General Fund. This action increases the number of grants analysts in the Grants Management Department from one to two. B, decrease the salary and benefit contra accounts in the General Fund by a total of $82,389 for the position. C, these adjustments offset for a net impact of $0 to the General Fund. This action arises from the need to transfer one position.
All right, again, there's no requested public commentary. This is budget neutral, but in our rules, when we change a position from one department to another, we need to do a special budget ordinance. Is there any additional council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. All right, again, that passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C 36180 General Fund, number one, add 10 police officer positions to the Spokane Police Department. A, the 10 additional positions are to be used for temporary hire ahead purposes as part of a three-year pilot project in the Spokane Police Department. Any costs associated with maintaining the higher head positions will be covered from savings from retirements and separations. B, there is no change to the overall appropriation level on the General Fund. This action arises from the need to mitigate the long lead time required to hire and onboard new police officers and maintain adequate staffing in the Spokane Police Department.
All right, we have one speaker request, Anwar Peace, if you want to come on up. And I'll just say, again, as it's pretty much said in the summary, this doesn't add really additional positions, but it authorizes us for hiring people so that we don't have to wait for the retirements or resignations and then start that process. And I was remiss if I could just invite you, Mr. Peace, to just say your name and what city you live in as just part of the record. Welcome, you have up to three minutes.
My name is Anwar Peace, and I live in the wonderful city of Spokane. Good evening. I am not opposed to adding 10 police officers to the police department. In fact, I understand that the staffing levels for the police department is way too low for Spokane, being the second biggest city in the state. So I believe that the staffing level increases is an appropriate conversation to have right now. But my only question is how we go about hiring those officers, and should the hiring process be revamped? The motto of SPD is integrity within ethical principles, character, and honesty, professionalism, and upholding the highest standards, effective standards, and compassion with concern, understanding, and desire to help. But over the last year or so, I've given a lot of testimony to this body that documents that this motto from the police department is not being lived up to by its officers, which has harmed the public trust and faith of this department. Just last week, the council received a briefing from the police ombudsman, who told the council that demeanor complaints have stayed at the same level for the past five years, which just goes to show you that the motto of integrity, professional, and compassion hasn't worked in lowering demeanor complaints. So because of those facts, I think the city should rethink the hiring process as well as how the city keeps officers employed, which will need to do some outside-of-the-box thinking from the city, a deeper look of applicants in their past in the hiring process, especially if those applicants are lateral hires from another police department. Those lateral hire applicants, AI files from their old agencies, must be shared to the public to provide confidence that those officers aren't problem officers from other departments. To keep employment, it's time for the department to institute a random drug and psychological testing for all police department personnel. I think a lot of rudeness from officers, unprofessional behaviors, as well as police misconduct, is a direct result of officers not dealing with their stress properly. It doesn't take a big incident for an officer to develop psychological issues. All the little things that they go through after time can build up and manifest itself in disastrous ways. Instituting these random tests will show the public, as well as the officers and their families, that the community wants them to be safe and healthy while they patrol our streets of Spokane. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just glad that we are considering this tonight. During our budget process last year, this was one of the ideas that I was really trying to strongly advocate for. I think I was kind of targeting more like 15, but I will more than gladly take 10. I think this is really important as we try to beef up our police department and get them fully staffed. And I believe that we actually need to go above and beyond our currently allowed staffing levels, even with this hire ahead, and add additional positions as we go forward into the future. But I think this is a great next step, not the last one. And I would just add, in terms of hiring practices, I would agree. I mean, I have been pretty outspoken that I think we need to look at how we go about our hiring practices, not just for SPD, but throughout City Hall. And I think that that's something that's really important for us to be looking at. I've shared that with the council here. I've shared that with the mayor's office, and I think that's something that's really important for us to consider as we move forward. But for today, adding this hire ahead authority, I think, is a really great tool for the police chief to have. So happy to support.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I concur. I'm one of the sponsors of this, and it's important to remember that Washington State, our ratio of officers to population is one of the lowest in the country. And in order to stay safe, we have to keep those ratios higher than they are. I'm also heartened by police really working hard to look for diversity within the police department, so they're actually targeting the recruitment to make sure that we're not just getting the same folks that we've had for years and years and years, but more women, more minorities, and they're making a concerted effort to do that. So I'll be supporting this as well. And I also add, I'm hoping the fire department can do the same, because again, we are so low on staffing, and it's causing our overtime budget to explode. It has repercussions in other areas, so I will be supporting this as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Councilman Cathcart for leading the way on this, and also Council President Beggs and Kinnear for co-sponsoring. As everybody, I think, in here understands, we do have a significant need to add a significant number of officers, and I think for us to just maintain the current level of staffing that we have right now, hire ahead authority is great forward thinking for us to be able to make sure that we don't drop below the already stretched thin numbers that we have now. And so I would join Councilman Cathcart and Kinnear in suggesting that we continue to hire more officers to make our city safer. So thank you all.
Yeah, and I would just add, as long as Councilmember Kinnear and I have been on the council, which is six years, we've been trying to get hire ahead for both police and fire. So special thanks to the mayor's office for agreeing to work with us on that. It's actually budget neutral, so it doesn't cost anything in terms of cash out of the General Fund, but it definitely lowers costs on the community. And I also mentioned that council previously has authorized up to four additional officers for traffic officers, and we have not gotten the police department to accept them yet coming from the Traffic Calming Fund. So I hope, under this administration, we can get that done, too, because having more officers doing traffic will reduce the pressure on the patrol officers, especially in an emergency. So looking forward to that. I also concur with both comments from the public and Councilmember Cathcart that we really need to relook at how we, what the qualifications are for officers and how we do hiring for officers. I think if we're talking about 21st century public safety, we just have to fine-tune things and get it better, which is not a critique of the current officers at all. It's just that we're asking officers to do a lot more, especially in the human services and the mental health area, and we just need to hire with that in mind as well. So I'm looking forward to working with the Civil Service Commission on that. I've spoken with them, and they're ready to go on, and I think the community is. So with that, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And we have one more special budget ordinance that we added under suspension of the rules this afternoon.
And I'll read this one in its entirety. Ordinance number C 36183, an ordinance admitting ordinance number C 36161 passed by the city council December 13, 2021, and entitled in ordinance adopting the annual budget of the City of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the City of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2022 budget, ordinance number C 36161 is above entitled in which passed the city council December 13, 2021, it is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the Continuum of Care Fund, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time of making such budget ordinance. And whereas this ordinance has been on file in the city clerk's office for five days, now therefore, the City of Spokane does ordain Section 1, that in the budget of the Continuum Care Fund and the budget annexed here, too, with reference to the fund, the following changes be made. Number one, increase revenue by $134,881. A of the increased revenue, $134,881, is for a planning grant that will be used to create a coordinated community plan for the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, YDHP, and to support ongoing implementation. Two, increase appropriation by $134,881. A of the increased appropriation, $134,881, is provided solely for contractual services provided by subrecipients that will develop a coordinated community plan for the YHDP. Section 2, it is therefore by the city council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth herein. Such urgency and emergency arising from the need to adjust the budget for the planning grant awarded to the city for the Youth Homelessness Demonstration Program, and because of such need and urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance, and also because the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage.
All right, there's no requested public commentary. Is there any council commentary?
Well, I'm excited. This partnership with Better Health Together, investing in our youth, we have seen the challenges and the gaps in services, so this will allow them to do some study. It will also allow them to engage young people with a stipend to pay them while they're participating in this activity. This is our now. If we're going to invest in their housing, this also helps to invest in their education and for them to be more proactive in what their life will look like right now. So I'll be supporting this.
Great. All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. That is all the votes. We did all voted appropriately and unanimously, so it's the era of good feelings on that.
First night.
We do have one first reading ordinance.
Ordinance C 36181 relating to the executive and administrative organization of the city, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections 1.07, 005, 3.0A, 215, and 3.0A, 315. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
All right, nobody signed up to testify on that, but again, just a reminder, under our rules dating back to last year, people can testify in first reading ordinances. That brings us to the end of our legislative session. We're about to go into open forum. We have three people signed up for that. But before, I just wanted to take a moment, a personal privilege, to again, recognize that the war in Ukraine is continuing. People are dying as we meet, including civilians, and it's breaking the hearts of many people around the world. But I'm particularly mindful of our Ukrainian and Russian community members here who are heartbroken by what's going on. And so I was just wondering if we could just take just the briefest of moments, just to meditate on that for a moment and imagine a more peaceful world and an end to this war. Thank you for allowing me that personal privilege. So the three people who've signed up for open forum are, in order of appearance, are going to be Rick Bowcock, Kim Schmidt, and Anwar Peace. Rick, come on up. And go ahead and introduce yourself.
Greetings. My name is Rick Bowcock.
Yes, you have three minutes.
When I worked with Gonzaga, they gave me a book, Constitutional Law, it was like this thick, and the First Amendment was like this much of it. So First Amendment is a very important amendment in constitutional law. And what I worry about a lot of times is when I'm stepping up for somebody, that I'm going to get targeted, and I have more than once, you know? So I have to be concerned about that. So I come down here, and I tell the city council here about what's going on, so that if I get targeted, at least you know that I've talked about it. So there's one incident, you know, like in front of the plaza, we got this mouthy preacher across the street with an amplifier, and he's blasting, telling everybody they're going to go to hell, you know, a lot of stuff, you know? Well, okay, they make the street performers and artists look good, so I'm glad about that. But my problem is not about him, it's about people that are on the other side of the plaza when they start doing counter protesting, calling him out, you know? And if you think that it doesn't happen, you just think of the Catholic Protestant wars. You see, you got a Catholic, you got Protestant, they disagree with each other. See? So it does happen, and you got other religions. So I was there, and this one guy called him out. It's the first thing that happens, a security guy comes over there and tells him he can't do that. You see, this is bothersome to me, because I tell him, yeah, he can. And I tell him about the lawsuit of the plaza. ACLU sued the plaza over freedom of religion. It was in 2009. Now, the guy that did this, he's quite a character. He'll upset you in 30 seconds, because he'll tell you he's a Christian, then he'll tell you he's a Jew, then he'll tell you he's a Muslim, and then he'll tell you that he's a racist, and he'll pull out his KKK card and show it to you, all in 30 seconds. But I get along with the guy. He's nutty, but he's the one that sued the plaza over freedom of religion. So this is an example that we have police officers in here, you guys all take the oath. This is something that the oath applies to. The security guy, he needs to be put in check. There's a police officer in there, they need to say, hey, you can't be going telling people they can't express their self to this guy over across the street that has an amplifier, and he's blasting to everybody else. We should be able to tell this guy to get lost. Now, he's not, it doesn't mean he's going to get lost, but we should be able to tell him he's going to get lost. Now, there's another incident happened on the St. Patrick's Day Parade. After the parade, I'm over here on Main Street going back to my house after doing a piece of art, and there's this black guy, he's from Seattle, he's animated, and he's selling his own personal CDs. So people from River Park Square, they tell him, you can't do that. And I tell him, you know, and they kind of shook him away. And I told him, I says, yeah, he can. This is a public sidewalk, and those are his CDs. He can sell those CDs. It's freedom of expression, it's freedom of speech.
Rick.
This is an example.
Three minutes is up.
Well, anyway, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure you know what's going on.
It's great to have you back. Thank you. Next, Kim Schmidt. And Rick, by the way, is from the city of Spokane, so please tell us where city you're from.
Hi, I'm Kim, and I'm from the Valley. I literally only signed up to say hi, welcome back. I'm so excited to be back in here. But while I was sitting over there, I thought I would also thank you guys for, it's been a week of some pretty unprofessional behavior in city leadership, and I just wanted to thank you guys for everything that you've done and stayed professional and everything that you've done to get warming centers open and all that stuff. I know you don't always hear thank you, but we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. All right, and then Anwar Peace, come on back. And you have up to three minutes as well.
Good evening. My name is Anwar Peace, and I'm from Spokane. I would like to take this opportunity to thank those city council members who wrote the March 9 spokesman op-ed about the sheriff's recent YouTube video blaming city leaders and community leaders for crime in Spokane. This op-ed calls out the fact that the sheriff was trying to sow seeds of harm and ill will to our community through seeds of harm and ill will to our community through divisive and divisive rhetoric and a narrative of discord and public intimidation, all in these sheriffs' videos that have been going nonstop since about a year now. I'd like to take this opportunity for the City Council members who raised the same issue about the sheriff's videos to the Police Chief in the March 7 City Council meeting, Public Safety meeting. I was somewhat disappointed with the chief's answers, though, but I was really kind of interested in one of his questions, one of his answers about the fact that police should be non-political when talking about the recent statewide police reform laws. That statement from the chief reminded me about a statement he made back in August at a public safety meeting, where he said officers should be apolitical. The Police Chief said this after a council member asked him to specifically help them combat the rumors that officers have been spreading about the City Council defunding the police. The Police Chief never really committed to stopping those rumors, and the Police Chief did the same non-committal thing in regards to standing up to the sheriff. The untruths and misinformation that the sheriff's been doing, I understand greatly. I, too, have been targeted by one of the sheriff's videos. It was a 16-minute video about eight months ago. That video gave me a lot of concern for my safety and my well-being, and in fact, I had to work with a security firm to help me with my now-security issues that are facing me because the sheriff did this in his video. So I truly empathize now hearing that the, some of these City Council members have these same security concerns that I had after this recent sheriff YouTube video. It's time for the Police Chief to stand up and denounce the sheriff's office videos. If not when? If not now, when? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peace. All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting. Again, I want to thank everyone for joining us, and everyone on the dais and staff and making this happen, TV5, there's been a lot of behind-the-scenes work. So it's just great to be back. It feels wonderful. So please, take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We are adjourned.